Good morning, everyone. Appreciate everyone for the shared some technical difficulties this morning, so. Hang it in there, so. But I did pass tobacco over to your district board. I guess before we start our meeting today and have a.
We do not know. We must go. If you just want to mark Seema. We need to. We don't know. Ma again, so long. Wait that. We back to Seena Ma or Beijing. When you do not got it. We winning to adopt not Seema. You already do not get who am I to go to get into keep man on him. Min was who guys do. Or do not. I see what Adam. You go hey, you back to Seena Ma or out then a boo doo. The back to Seena Ma or same art. To top not gay. In what ago. You are we in the Ma or Min was who what about the award and mission happen. Yes, it's good. You know what's go gives us. It's a good decision. You go hey, who is on you back to Seena Ma or you any to adopt not Seema. This is what I want to hour. What I want to add and mission happen. Is you down to work. So yeah. You go hey. As you came with awesome, you were in the way no ma. As you will call and mission happen, we might. We are using. In what go. As you back to Seena Ma or you. Now you got a joke. You any. You are what and mission happen. You go hey, I'll now he gives us new back to Seena Ma or you any to adopt not Seema. She go ever stood or only care one on one each game on. In what go only give way on. I mean, the game is a duck or not Seema. Missionabe. You go hey, you back to Seena Ma, I can no ma give you go. You any to adopt not or Seema. You been nice to what. They meant to gay. You know, we're in the game, wow. Who's always been nice is you call and mission happen, but no way to monitor and wave or not. You you. We enjoy in a amagak in the missionabe when. You know what's who in the missionabe in N D zone. Into the key man on him. Min was who in wave or not on him. You go hey. You back to Seena Ma, I can no ma into keep man on him. You any to adopt not award Seema. They meant to gay, you may be queen of my own Beijing or something. Is you will call and mission happen. You any. I know I am a gen. You know what's who is you can wait no ma or you. I could see we can make on I am a gen. You go hey, you back to Seena Ma, I can no ma into keep man on him, make way I. I mean, the game, you may be queen of my own. But go to N N E, you can wait no ma or mission happen, make way I. I am a gen. You know what's who I can no I would get a joke. Is you by me, I want to miss nothing to my just be more than. You go hey, you back to Seena Ma, I can no ma need be come. We any to adopt not Seema. They meant to gay, you may be queen of my own Beijing. As you be do. Is you can wait no ma, they may question when it's in Min was who. Is you can wait down, we know we're gonna get in on it. You back to Seena Ma, we any. I can no pay up, get a job, go away, any the. You look how we young. They meant to gay, is you. Benjamin on, you go, I see, we need go to you on. You know what's who guys, you men, you may not move on. John, I'm a big gun on an egg. You know who on. No, it gave who. You go hey. I do can not. I see, that's my award. And it's not been no ma, I can't even look ma. You know what go. You back to Seena Ma. We any, you know, not only goes here. Wrong. But we been to Min no man. Min was who go way. I'm a two young, you you. I see, I'm a two young, you you in the missionabe when. And the not as you win it. Is you call what Min was who in the way or not. You give it to get on. My job gay. You want to get on. You back to Seena Ma, oh. Now he gives us we any. Where I go stood. I'm a best creator. Made a boo doo, his grandmother. How it is. Wow. And. Trying to translate to you guys. You know, did what. Um, in that. One. As you came with awesome. And all the ones in the sky. And especially those thunderbirds and the one called was always been nice that helps us take care of our language. And all the ones here on earth. Especially one called the typical Nave. It helps us to. Be healthy and watch the door with people that are in the hospitals. And. Ones in the water and watch over the. Swimmers and. Our race stems. That's all to help us out as we. Try to hang on to what was given to us. And try to take care of our language, our custom. And remember our legends. Because that's. Really what our culture is, you know. You.
No. Maybe it was wrong, thank you. Maybe it was a reminder, it was worse. All right, also, we'll get started here. Call three in order, it's nine thirty eight A M. Michael, do you want to roll call, please?
District one.
Here.
District two.
Here.
District three.
Here.
And I'm here, chairman.
Be with, we have a quorum, thank you. Next up is review and approve the agenda, any deletions or additions.
Mr. Chairman, under new business, like, we need to add the New Year's Eve power budget. You need to sign off on it. Be with you. Also, an executive session. Uh, I would like to add. I don't know, I'm gonna put this so. It's an R B C discussion on the. That hole intake pipe. So, just a brief discussion. Which.
Anything else, counsel?
Yes. Uh, housing stabilization program for executive session. And then from the consent agenda under finance, the wider childcare program, community basketball court. Notice of awards moved to executive session for discussion. And then just a reminder of anyone reporting today. Add that to the.
Yes, we'll add the reporters for the, I know. Rainey's here. Wanted to really buy the great action here. Uh, she'll do a quick review update. Uh, we also have the elders council and the district commission here.
I see them, I see most of them.
Okay, well, we'll give them time if they're here. I will add them to the reports too, so.
Because they're gonna, we're gonna approve their budget today.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll have an update from them, so. I appreciate with that set motion to approve the agenda. Oh yeah.
More items to executive session. That was the information you know. Today.
I'm gonna do it, yeah.
Green Patrick Holmes. Um, attorney engagement, federal lobbyist, Robbie Von Mace, and then Highway fifty nine homes.
Fire things. Okay, fire.
Okay. If that said, anything else, counsel, I've written motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor.
Aye.
With the changes. Motion here, thank you. Next up is review and approve the meeting minutes for eleven twenty five, twenty four.
Mr. Chairman. In the minutes we had, when we talked about the. The M C T enrollment ordinance. And all this is brief discussion was held on a proposed resolution brought forward today. I guess, I don't know if we have to. I think in that resolution, I think that we did, we took, we, I think we took out. A correction in Congress and the council, but I thought we took out. The White Earth will immediately add Red Lake Blood Home General enrollment. Correct eligibility criteria. I thought we took that out, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, but. Okay, doesn't have the changes.
Oh, that's what changes, okay, all right. Okay. Thank you.
The language in there wasn't very clear, so I question that. Or just the way it's written. Do you want that part change might could be more clear? Because it just says removal of therefore be it for the result.
Well, since here just says that. It says approve. A proof of changes. So that we did change it, correct? That's all I was wondering if we did.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted.
No, I think very good, very good, very good. So, thank you.
I guess if somebody from the outside was trying to read it, they might be wondering, but.
No, I think what will be okay long is if they want to look at the resolution, the resolution will say what it says. The resolution has. I would like motion.
Here, a second. Motion by Mike to approve the business for. Eleven fifty five, I want to. Before. Motion by Mike Barax, second by Henry. All in favor, with, with, was there no changes in there?
No.
No changes, okay. All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Be with. Okay, next up, we have. The reports, there's no business over with the reports and we have, I have Rainey here, so she'll stay here. And we'll go into the elders council and elder commission, so, because it coincides with their budget, so.
Good morning. Um, just a few exciting updates as far as the White Earth, I guess. We have now six dentists. Permanent dentist and one who was on contract. She had other obligations, but has applied for permanent. Positions as well, so that would slate us at seven. Which is extremely exciting. With that, the equipment went through our. Procedures to acquire the proper equipment for our own mill for dentures and things. However, training will accompany. Once we get the equipment, the companies come and do hands-on training. So that all staff will be equipped. Um. So now we're looking for more hygienists and assistants to support all of the dentists that we have, but it's a good problem that have. We have brought in forty-four new staff, not including contract staff overall, since last December. Um, and some of those contractors are coming on as permanent. So we look at that as a positive as well. We, an offer has been made for a clinical director and he will be letting us know by January third. E V S has all kinds of staff, we just hired on two more staff, so they are. Just loving having some depth. To the cleanliness now that it's sloppy and salty and all of those kinds of things, they needed the extra hands. Because they've come at a better time. On security too, they, I think, are looking to hire one more. Um, staff member, which is great, those were pretty depleted departments. A year ago, um, NATO Watch. We have just here, starting January twenty first as a permanent provider, nurse practitioner out there. And also, we have sent an offer to the third provider. Um, so we're hoping to hear back as an acceptance any day. And that individual has been out there as a private contract provider. Um, so it would be great if she so decides to come on board for permanent. P R C has added two new staff members and one contract staff. We're gearing up for triple H C reaccreditation for quality. Um, so that's. A good step in the right direction, construction should be completed. We're slated for December thirty first. We will move in to where we are occupying the space and able to see patients. In all departments for January twenty first. Some of our radiology equipment needs to be, uh, the checks and balances and having specialty. Vendors come in and ensure that we're safe to operate effectively for both lab and radiology, and I don't want to. Move over to the area and piecemeal things together, it just adds too much chaos, so we're waiting. On to open up January twenty fourth first for that, which is also exciting. The flooring throughout the entire facility will be getting replaced once the final construction is completed. They are going to do four to six hundred square feet per day. Where they channel it, reinstall, clean up. And then move on to the next, their hours that they will start working are from two to ten P M, so outside of patient care hours. So that will take probably three months to get completed for all the flooring throughout the facilities, so that is also a significant win for our facility. That's all that I have for updates.
Any questions for Rainey? Rainey, did you, maybe I didn't hear, did we, did we order a meal?
Yeah, the equipments.
Okay, good, good, good.
Now we're gonna get trained as well of that stuff once it comes, but.
That's a good thing, counsel.
And we have all kinds of dentists now too.
That's good news.
It is good.
We'll all be smiling, huh?
Early white.
One more jack-o'-lantern. Well, that's a good thing, I think, this is something that's up. I think our elders have been waiting for this, I know the. The elders I talk to always talk about NATO Watch and, of course, for your service union on our dental and. You know, I know that we get a lot of visitors from outside that come utilize our services, so. But I think when we add this component to it, I think we're gonna get a lot of people from the whole northern Minnesota comes here, so. That's the next thing is prioritizing and. And make sure that they have a R B C block for myself and yourself. No, just. Love you, but thank you, Rainey, for that, for the report, and I'm excited, so. I'm glad for our service units and keep doing the good work and. Distribution of people.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. So what's your percentage of full staff? Are you, how, how, how short are you still?
Overall, between NATO Watch and White Earth, I'd say right around thirty-five to thirty-seven percent.
You still are. Thank you.
Yep. But it's better than sixty percent.
Yeah.
That's where we were. So, for the flooring. So was that replaced before and then you have to do it again? Yep. So it was all Mohawk flooring that was part of this entire project. And it was defective flooring. Um, and so they had two different components, one was the top laminate was peeling back. And then some of the subfloor with whatever the adhesive that they used wasn't sticking, and so there's bubbles all throughout. And it's, um. Far too large of a product. And, uh, in my opinion, too large. Um, of a construction project to just settle on something that is defective right off the gate, and so we thought very hard. To have that replaced at very low cost to us. Um, as the size of the project, we shouldn't have to put up with the defective part, so. I'll take it as a link. Kind of a nuisance to replace after the fact, but. Better to do it now. Okay, be with.
Okay, thank you, Rainey. See you next one.
Yep. I knew you're ready.
You too.
Okay, next up, we have the elders council, so. Sam Colleen wants to make a call.
Okay. Have, is there any questions on my statement? I handed up. And, um. The next point is elsewhere, but. Why, because we have, um. We just like national, you know, dinner. It's only ninety seven ninety. So, um. Basically, it's why it's out. We have, um, maybe it's about one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and sixteen cents in our savings. And we have five thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and five cents in checking. Um, the first, um, was, um, we went to Walker. For the day, for two days, we went, so we stayed over there. And then, um, we went to. Um, halfway. And, um, had a nice group that, um, the new ones have joined us, so. It's, um. Anybody have a question? Okay. Don't include into the point.
Great.
Who's next? Good. How do you, it's gonna get away.
Just a quick, uh. We're working on our calendar for the upcoming year, make sure that, uh, we can get some trips on plan for. For October. But, uh, start to do something. We have. Wait. Go ahead. So, and. It was all. I know we have. Oh, you're ramping up. Um. And I'm working on, um. He had. I just. I worked with. Um. Worked on these graphics. They're the ones that fly some intel stuff. And then go through the part graphics. You know, you serve the school day. And public talent. And, um, I've been working with them. And they're really doing a good job. Um. We just got twelve hundred pounds of macaroni for a right. And a hundred pounds for tunes. Who bank up there. And that's the good, that is, they come in twenty pound boxes bulk. And unless somebody wants a twenty pound box, we have to, I've been spent both my Christmas Eve and Christmas. Putting two pounds, making twenty pounds in a two-pound bag and getting them. They give out, and I got most of them given out, ninety percent of them given out. Um, Christmas Day and yesterday. Um, and along with that, I've also got the North Country Food Bank. Um, the supplemental food program, we have twenty people signed up with that now, and they get a box. And a two-pound box of cheese, commodity cheese. Everybody loves commodity cheese. And we had to get that for us, and that was, we delivered those just before Christmas. And we had a fantastic. Um, elders Christmas party. Um, I believe it was last Monday. Um, before Christmas. And Laura Lee attended and everyone was glad to figure it out. And we had fifteen people, we've only been getting six and seven people in our elder, the E of D site. Sixteen people showed up that day for bingo. And we gave away fifteen twenty-five dollar gift cards. Um. Let's see, there was five blankets. Four Christmas books, the night before Christmas, big hardcover books that were brand new from Walmart. And a travel case. And Laura Lee got candy bags for everyone. And everyone was really happy and, um, Laura Lee attended and I think everyone enjoyed themselves immensely, they were really happy for Christmas. So, I thank you, the car C P for everything you guys do for elders on the reservation. And, um, I'm hoping. Within a few days here, we're gonna find out what this new term of office and walking to D C comes out to be. And I'm hoping that we don't get hit real hard with it, I'm hoping the best for all of them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a big question. Tim, I, I know you guys report monthly, but at your quarterly meeting, what I, I guess what I would like to see is, I would like to see. And I, Sam does a good report for just the Pine Point area. So what I would like to see is maybe you guys could branch out to the other areas like Rice Lake, White Earth, Na'kaua. And, and give some brief updates on what's happening in those other communities. Because it's every, every month, we, I, I understand Sam reports on Pine Point, but he's part of, he's also part of those. Your White Earth Council Elders that covers the whole reservation. So what I would suggest is maybe, and I, Tim, you're, I know you're really progressive. So I would, I would suggest, just my recommendation would be that at your quarterly meetings, uh, maybe have somebody do a. A report like Sam does for Pine Point or those other areas, if you can do that, so.
We're in the process now of getting members from those communities to, like I said, to have bingo in those communities and stuff, so we want to get more reports from those communities. And we want more involvement, so the last couple meetings we had, we have been. Um, bringing up that we need somebody to step up from those communities, because they're living in those communities, we need to. We need to have representatives from all those communities. We need to, we need to have representatives from all those communities and stuff and we need to make sure that we're getting to all the communities.
Anyways, yeah, that's, that's, you know, the thing I kind of noticed when we do our gear monthly, your quarterly, so that we, we don't really say anything about the other communities and I think that's very important and we get that down. Any question?
My, my, I also have that, um, when I take people on trips, they're all elders and they're all from variety areas and they're all supporting that.
No, that's fine. I mean, just as a suggestion.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Okay.
Is it that? Yeah. Uh, who's the commission? Yeah.
Yeah, it's Robin.
Robin? Rockin' Robin.
Um, elders commission, we have, um, done a lot with, uh, applications out for the elders and everything. We have gone through a few of the health fairs plus the veterans powwow. We set up tables and handed out applications for elders on weatherization, um, the snow plowing, anything that could help with our elders on the reservation. So, we kind of got pretty much everybody that we did this in Natawatch in Menomans, Rice Lake, but we're hoping just to catch all the elders that had questions. We had kind of information for them and everything. Um, uh, we also had several elder concerns, fill out paper works, which we turned into, um, I believe it was Lori and Curtis, and we do have a few more out there. I think this really helps the elders as far as voicing their concerns and everything that they have. Um, and then we're going to have to go back and check to see what is done because I know a couple of them have come and asked me, well, what's being done about this? And, um, so I will be checking with Lori and Curtis and, and you know, that there is an reservation on these. Uh, we had five of us from the elders commission that attended the CARCC meeting down in Hinkley and stuff. We thought that was a very good meeting and everything. So, appreciate being able to go along to that. Um, uh, for our commission treasurer Francine Day, who, um, I last, uh, I believe it was the November meeting because she did not attend last month's meeting, whether, um, she said so far the new budget proposal hasn't been.
It's here, we have it.
You got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, we're also discussing the Nacola Conference that will be in September twenty twenty-five down in Durant, Oklahoma. Um, we're trying to get all the information and get applications filled out for that. Um, the commission is also supporting a draft from Don Goodwin for the, um, the draft resolution regarding the line five replacement project and stuff. Don has been to our last few meetings and we, she's got more information to us and so we are supporting her. Um, we have attended the elders Christmas party, the health fairs and veterans powwow and, uh, um, and like I said, if any of other elders have questions or anything on, any information, if we want to give one of us call out some of the places where we've had our table, we handed out papers that had all us commissioners' names on it and phone numbers so they could get ahold of any one of us throughout the district, but we're willing to, you know, put ourselves out. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys putting out all those applications and all I've seen you guys doing that, that's really important because we, we as council get a lot of questions. We get a lot of questions about where are these applications at? Where is this? Where is that? Where is this? What's that? So, when we have these big events, I really appreciate you guys doing that because it means a lot. It does.
And we also work with them.
Yep. And I'm, I'm really happy how you guys are working together.
Yeah, we're working together.
Well, the great collaboration. Me question to everyone. Thank you. Okay, next up is the, the twenty-four, twenty-five elders commission budget. Any questions on that council? I was asked for a motion to approve their budget. With, hey, should that be a with addition? Do we budget, do we budget X one dollar for them, but they're asking for more this year?
Well, we haven't had a budget for them yet, set this year yet, so let's just be setting their current budget.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I talked to Tracy real quick and I, uh, whatever they ask for, normally if they're under that, they don't have to give anything back because we just didn't give them more than that. So, I think in the future, what we'd like them to do is take a look at their last year's budget and then when they submit their next year's budget, they can, they can even it out. So, and I don't think there's anything in here more than what's was, I, I haven't seen last year's budget, so. I mean, I've seen it last year, but I didn't see it this year, so it doesn't look like there's anything on the order. So, and then unless you guys can see anything else. Council? Are you guys up to this?
I'm up. Okay, we're asking for a motion to approve their budget.
A motion.
Motion by Henry.
Second.
Second by Eugene, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, elders commission. Uh, Sam, any question?
I knew there was something that I forgot when I was speaking. Um, I brought this up to, I know Mike and both Mike, um, the elder Christmas cards, the hundred dollar Christmas card. We had a few snap oohs and that. Um, Mike, and I know Mike heard me that probably next year, things are going to change a little bit. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, Mike, for the people that didn't get theirs yet?
No, I can't.
Well, I guess we, we did talk about it. Uh, you know, we always get better at everything and we take a look at it and I know Lori and Curtis are, work very hard on this and we also work with, uh, behavioral health on this also with, uh, Nicole Kent and her staff, uh, getting this stuff, getting it brought up, getting, getting it done. There was some confusion about, you know, who we were going to serve and we were, we were just going to serve on reservation. We were going to serve just the, like the urban office, their service area, the marble office, their service area, the Cass Lake office, their service area. So, us as a council came together and, and just kind of said, well, let's look at the overall picture on this thing and just let's process every application that comes through. No matter if you're, if, if you're, basically it was no matter if you're in Texas or California or whatever, you know, I mean, we, the applications that come in, we decided that we were going to process those. Uh, and as far as the process is concerned of mailing them out, I mean, we could probably maybe get better at that also. You know, maybe next year, we can offer an option to maybe stop in and pick them up, maybe. I'm not sure what we could do with that for sure. So, but I mean, and then the other thing is, is that we wanted to take a look at some other options other than a Walmart card. We want, I've been working with the finance department and Tracy and her staff on what we could look at is for a, for a one-time card that you could just use anywhere, you know, instead of having to just use it at Walmart only. So, you know, I think you can make those cards, but we have to figure out how we could do that, if we can do it as a council. So, I know there's those reloadable cards that you can buy from Walmart, but you know, everybody is, they'll lose them and then all of a sudden you gotta, you print some more or whatever like that. But those are some of the challenges that we've had with this year's. Um, Mr. Chairman also talked about a direct payment, a direct payment to the elders too, you know, so we could maybe look at something like that, maybe instead of a gift card, it'd be a direct payment to all elders that apply. The other thing was is that people were, uh, the challenges were that, that elders were thinking that if they got it last year, they automatically got it this year. And that wasn't, that, that was part of the case, but it wasn't really the whole case. You know, we still had to, we still had to look at some, some information on that to, to get that out there. So, we have, we have elders that'll say, hey, I'm waiting for my card in the mail. Well, did you apply? Well, no, I was told that I, I was told that I got it last year, so I'll get it this year. So, there's been some kind of challenges with that also. So, and we're working through them. We're, we're going to, after this year, since I think that we, we pushed the deadline back to January first, people can still apply for the card up till January first. Then after January first, we got a whole year to figure this thing out. So, I'm sure we'll start figuring it out about two weeks before it comes out again. No, I'm just joking. But we have a whole year to figure it out and, and get it, get it taken care of, so, on these things. So, but I think it's very important that we, uh, that we did what we did, you know, that as a council, we raised that to a hundred dollars. We let anybody that applied could get it. So, I think those are very important, uh, issues here during the holiday season. So, uh, I don't, I don't think I have anything else to report on that, but that's, that's in a nutshell. We can get better at what we do and we've always looked at moving forward and get better at what we do. So, and with the, you know, the commission and the week going, you know, we really appreciate you guys' support in getting to the people and, and getting to them and getting the applications and, and then just be patient with us. That's all I, that's what I'm going to end with. Just be patient with us. You know, if your car doesn't come to last year, first of the year, then it doesn't come to last year, there's really nothing we can do about that right now, so.
Blame it on the mail.
Yeah, blame it on the mail.
Not only that, but I was collecting all the applications and sending them to Nicole Kent and then everybody got their Christmas cards. So, I called her up and I said, hey, I didn't get my Christmas card. She goes, I don't even have you on the list.
They might have had you on the naughty list though. They went for naughty and nice.
I, I, um, one of my past work, the ones that have received it, they really appreciate it. And I, I did, uh, stress to the ones that I talked to is fill out an application first and then, you know, make it easier for a person.
Any other council members have any comments on it?
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Have a great day now. Take care.
The problem I've seen out there and I'm hearing that the elders is their mailbox is being checked by more times than they were. And this is the problem we're going to run into that is when people know they're coming out to, if you don't live in town or post office, got a little mailbox, they were trucking, driving around, following the mail around and checking mailboxes for people that weren't home or something. So, I don't know if you're going to have anybody saying, well, I didn't get one. And then you say, well, can you prove you didn't visit? And, and that's just going to be a problem there with the US mail.
Thank you, Sam. All right.
I would recommend people, if you see that, before you go to the police.
Yeah. It's a federal offense.
Thank you, elders. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Get the powwow. Okay, next up, we have the Pine Point School budget or, uh, Pine Point School donation request.
Mr. Chairman, they did, uh, I was talking to Maria here and she said that they, we did, we did.
Oh, yeah.
And we took care of that. Um, on the Pine Point School donation, I believe, if you look at the, uh, the whole event was to be eighty-six hundred dollars. They did get three thousand from, uh,
A donation.
Donation committee and then you got fifteen hundred from our.
Youth and elder.
Youth and elder. So, are they looking for this eighty-six or are they?
Well, it would be forty-one hundred that is remaining. And housing authority, um, can help too, so they were, we told them to reach out to them too. So, you know, um, Nagani just reached out to me about this and I know she's, um, just starting. So, Nagani Bruner reached out to me and, you know, I, I recommended the different, um, funding sources that she could access. So, you know, she just starting this too. So, um, like Maria said, they got three thousand from donation, fifteen hundred, um, from youth. Um, later housing authority has some funding, so I don't know if we want to wait till next month and see where, where they're at or if we just want to make it amount. It is in, in March, so we have a little bit of time.
We can table it then. Table it for next meeting, yeah. For the date of March.
Okay. What are the conference students? You want to just table it? Okay, we'll table this till next meeting. Uh, next up is, uh, the New Year's Eve powwow for Natawatch. Any questions on that?
Here's my mic. Hand it up. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I didn't, I didn't run it past legal. I, we did get the budget and we, I did get the contract from the, from the chairman of the powwow committee for this powwow. Uh, you just need to sign it. Uh, Brian Clark is the, is the chair, is going to be the chairperson of the powwow committee for the sobriety, New Year's Eve, sobriety powwow. We got budgets and contracts that are approved. Uh, everything looks really good. They did put, uh, what they did what we wanted them to do, they did put stipends in there for each, there's five, five, five powwow committee members that they have for this powwow and they did, they did recognize in their budget with the stipends portion of it, so which we wanted, which we were, uh, having challenges with before. So, I did get the contract. Uh, you just need to sign it, Chairman, and we're good to go. We have to prove it? Yes, we do. Yeah, we have to prove it.
Okay, motion to approve the New Year's Eve powwow budget.
Yeah.
Motion by Eugene.
Second.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Or by Henry, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. All right, next up is the consent agenda. I'll read it to everyone. On the consent agenda, we have a few items. Uh, first, first off is the behavioral health with the Ministry of Department of Health, cannabis and substance use prevention grant agreement and resolution with ORAC grant agreement resolution, unicel, omnicel, I'm sorry, renewal contract for twenty twenty-five. For economic, we have foundation application for Alba Lake Boys and Girls Club and resolution. For education, we have the Pine Point District, District Twenty-Five Impact Aid, FY twenty-five. We have Bagley School District Impact Aid Application, Menoma District Impact Aid Application, also student count for I, IDEA, Part B and C. For finance, we have Warriors, uh, family treatment for flex certificate of completion, Warriors Childcare Program, Community Basketball Court Notice and Rewards. We have the Warriors Natural Resources Picnic Shelter, Lynwood Park Contract Resolution with the Warriors Children Modular Building, uh, relocation contract resolution with COLA BIA twenty-three, twenty-four amendment number four. We have the Warriors Tribal Health Department Upper Level E Model CM Contract Warriors Builders and Resolution with the Warriors Childcare Program, Community Basketball Court Notice and Rewards and Resolution with the Warriors Tribal Health Department Upper Level E Model Contract Resolution. Also for health, we have the dietitian leadership contract with the one oh five lease documents for twenty twenty-five. We have Dr., uh, Dr. Uncontract, uh, we have the Native Reach Good Health TV Contract Resolution. And for human service, or with the Maurice Brandon, Brandon, Brandon Contract Resolution, we have FH PAP Proposal Twenty-Five Three Twenty-Seven. We have the State Opioid Response Extension and Increase Funding and Resolution, also the MASH Consultation Services and Resolution. For IT Department, we have the Project Director Assignment. We have the Master Service Agreement Amendment. For legal, we have the Regional Native Public Defense Annual Certificate, No Contribution and Resolution. We have a new LSC request. Uh, we have business license renewals for seven businesses. Uh, natural resources, we have a twenty twenty-five BIA Aquatic Evasive Species Funding. We have the twenty-four, uh, FY twenty-four Q three and four Tribal Wildland Fire Special, Special Pay Supplement and Resolution. We have the BIA Tribal Youth Initiative Program Letter of Support and Resolution. We have the Margaret Turgill, um, Full Empathy, uh, and Resolution. We have the BIA Circle of Flight CDF Program Letter and Resolution. We have the BIA Fish Hatchery Maintenance Funding Letter and Support and Resolution. With the letter of support for Menomans Swiffer Application, we have the Letter for the Pesticides Management Plan Committee and Resolution. We have the FY twenty-five Harvest Plan and Resolution. And for public works, we have the Waldores Sewer Extension Gordon Construction Contract Resolution. For ratification, we have the PFAS Reporting Comment. We have the BIA OJS Indian Highway Safety Program and we have the Letter to Governor Walz. Any questions, any additions to that? We miss anything? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, um, the Warriors Childcare Program, Community Basketball Court Notice of Awards, both should be pulled and brought into executive session. Mr. Chairman, um, the Wyler's Childcare Program, Community Basketball Court Notice of Awards, both should be pulled and brought into executive session. And then under Natural Resources, Margaret Cargill, uh, just a correction on the resolution to state a hundred and fifty thousand rather than a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which I have in hand here, big switch.
Okay, that's just a change, okay, keep increasing it. Okay, council, any questions or. Besides the changes that we just talked about, are we okay with it? I was asked for a motion to approve with the changes.
Motion with changes.
Motion by Mike with the changes.
Oh, second.
Second by Laura Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, under ratifications on the agenda, there's three items that were not listed within the consent agenda, so I'd just like to bring your attention to, um, make a motion to ratify the three that are on the agenda, item number three.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, these guys, remember, you might have to go back, huh?
I think you could just call for a motion on the ratification.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll add these to the ratification, the urban reimbursement on the public safety deputy register application, and also the housing consultant contract.
Motion.
Motion by Eugene.
Second.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, thank, thank you for bringing that up, I didn't see that, so. But with that said, I'd like to say big switch to our visitors that came in today. Um, appreciate you, um, we're going to executive session next, so I'd, I'd just ask for a motion to go into executive.
Motion.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, big switch. Everyone be safe out there, have a happy New Year, I'll see you at the powwow, dance hard, sing hard, um. Big switch, can you go a little bit, big switch?
Yeah, take a five.